Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council for August 17, 2020, and call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you all please join me with a moment of silent reflection? And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes of August 3, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Next, we have a proclamation. Now, my agenda shows that Ms. Simpson's going to present this.
Thank you. I am extremely excited and honored to get to do the proclamation this evening, if you will allow me. Whereas on Women's Equality Day, we commemorate the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution, which guarantees women the right to vote. And whereas on the 100th anniversary of this milestone, it is appropriate time to reflect on the remarkable accomplishments of women in every facet of American life, and also an opportunity to honor women for their leadership in service to their families, their communities, and their nation. Whereas, in the same spirit of the 19th Amendment, we continue to seek an environment of opportunity for all women as we celebrate the passion and unwavering dedication of the women who struggled and persevered in the fight for suffrage. And whereas Public Law 93-105 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designated August 26 as Women's Equality Day. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council of Arvada, Colorado hereby recognize August 26, 2020, to be Women's Equality Day, and ask our citizens to continue to work for the equal rights of all citizens. Dated this date, 17th day of August, 2020.
Next, we have a presentation from the Audit Committee. Mr. Archer, is that you?
It's not just me. We will have a presentation from our auditor as soon as she's able to get on. I just got a message from her that she's having a challenge getting in. So hopefully, she'll be able to get in here really quickly. In the meantime, I can certainly tell you that we had a good meeting just before this with our Audit Committee that included our two City Council members. And we were happy to report that we received a clean audit. We had no issues. And so, we're very excited to report that. I'm checking my phone. I see Noel is trying to help us. So give me one minute, if you would, please. Okay, I see Jody has made it in. So, Jody, I'd like to turn this over to you.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Thank you for your patience as I worked through technical difficulties. I met with the city's Audit Committee earlier tonight with John and Lauren were a part of that group, and went over in a more detailed presentation results of the audit. So tonight at the council meeting, I just wanted to kind of go through a high-level overview of the audit. This was a very, very interesting year. We all went into lockdown and stayed home right at the beginning of the audit. So both teams were trying to work through for the first time ever how to accomplish and audit the size of the cities in a remote environment. And both teams really stepped up to the plate and hit it out of the park, especially Arvada's team, who was having to provide volumes of information, supporting documentation in detail to us electronically. And we just are so appreciated, so appreciative of the extra effort that we know it took to get through this audit in a remote environment. And really, the results were outstanding. What we do, what we're hard to do is express an opinion on the comprehensive annual financial statements, which we were able to accomplish as a part of this audit. We're happy to report it was a clean, unmodified opinion, which is what you're looking for out of an audit. That's the best result that you can get. We also looked at the, performed a single audit in accordance with Uniform Guide and Standards, which govern federal expenditures. We looked at the Housing Voucher Program, which is typically the one we look at because it is the largest federal program with the city. And we issued an opinion on compliance and on internal control and over the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And then we're required, as a part of our audit, to inform the Audit Committee of certain required communications. And we went over all of those in great detail with the committee earlier this afternoon. And really, the bulk of that was there's nothing to report. There were no difficulties. There were no adjustments. And really, all around, there were no findings, no management letter comments. It really was just an outstanding year from an audit perspective for the city. We talked about some of the risks that we look at as a part of the audit and those areas that we consider to be higher risk, which from an audit perspective, every audit, we consider management override of controls and revenue recognition as really high-risk areas. Because if fraud is going to happen, that's where they're going to happen. So those are always considered high-risk in every audit that we do. And then in addition, a little more specific, we look at capital assets because there are large, large dollars running through those transactions and also a large volume of transactions running through capital assets. That's an area where we look at as well. We went through a very high level, some of the financial numbers. And really, everything is in line with where you would expect it to be based on budgets. City's net position is in very good shape. Asset increased and debt increased, both attributable primarily to the bond issuance that happened in 2019. And really, that's probably, when you just look at the numbers, the biggest difference from other years. Revenue's expenses, both in the governmental activities and the business-type activities, were both very comparable to prior years. Let's see. I talked about from a single audit perspective, federal awards increased slightly, just a couple hundred thousand dollars from prior years. And again, we looked at the Housing Voucher Cluster. No findings over that program, no findings over financial statements. The one kind of other matter comment that we have was really just kind of an FYI. I know that we've talked in committee meetings and at council before about some of the looming standards that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has put out there that the city will have to implement in the fairly near future. GASP 84 was on our list for this year, but GASP was kind enough to extend that deadline, considering everybody was in a remote environment. So what had been started on that will continue and more than likely be implemented next year. And then GASP 87, which relates to leases, was also extended and will be ready to help the city as soon as they're ready to start looking at that standard as well. Again, overall, excellent, excellent work by the city. Management letter comments, we don't have any. Last year, we had two. We were able to see significant progress or complete implementation on any prior year management letter comments. And just really praise to Brian and Lisa and Deb and their teams for working so hard to really get the books closed and keep the audit on track. We didn't really even have any delays due to the move to a remote environment. So at this point, I'll open it up to any questions that council might have.
Any council questions? Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't actually have any questions. I do have a couple of comments I'd like to make about the audit. I want to say thank you to the city staff and city team particularly for going through an audit, and an audit that yielded no findings. And so with an organization the size of the city of Arvada, a couple of million, a couple of hundred million dollars in annual revenue, that's quite a thing. I have served on audit committees for the Urban Drainage Flood Control District as well as a small sanitation district. And this is the first time I've seen an audit with no findings at all. And so for an organization of this size to have that, I think, is very impressive. And it's a tribute to both Mr. Devon and Mr. Archer, but also their teams for doing such great work. I also want to make a comment about this year was unique because of the remote nature of the audit. Typically, auditors will come into your physical location where they have access to documents, the physical place, as well as people. And in this particular case, because it was done remotely, they didn't have, they weren't here to do that. But yet, still, Mr. Devon's team and Mr. Archer's team were able to provide them with all the access they needed to all those things. So they were able to receive all the documents that they needed, the ones that were electronic and the ones that were not, as well as access to all of the people that they needed. And again, good job to the team for doing that. And then just wanted to bring up, lastly, that there will be upcoming challenges in the future with audits due to changing standards. But after serving on this Audit Committee the last couple of years, I have great confidence that Mr. Archer's team will do exactly what's needed to meet those challenges, even though I don't believe they will be easy all the time for them. But we're in good hands with them taking care of this for us. So, thank you.
Good. I see no other questions. I appreciate the reaffirmation that our team does an excellent job in assisting the auditor. And, you know, the glowing praise of Mr. Archer causes me a little concern, but that's, you know, that's just because it's Mr. Archer. And his CSU background. But other than that, we know Lisa Yagi does a good job, so she carries you.
Like we said at the Audit Committee, the real praise needs to go towards Lisa Yagi and Deb Nielsen and the rest of the finance team. They're the ones that do this day in and day out. And so I'm very appreciative to be a part of that team. And thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember, for your kind words.
Very good. Thank you all. Next, we'll move on to public comment on items not on our agenda. I've got one sign up from Carsten Sutton, if you wish to come down and make your three minutes, up to three minutes of comments. Yeah. Yes, you may. We can.
My name is Carsten Sutton, and I'm a member of Arvadans for Social Justice and a Jefferson County Public School teacher. I'd like to offer an idea for the council's immediate consideration: mobile ballot boxes in government vehicles. In a nutshell, instead of voters having to go to the drop-off boxes, the ballot drop-off box could come to them. Mobile ballot boxes would be an easy, inexpensive, and secure idea for this council to support. Furthermore, such innovation around voting in our November 2020 election will not only meet all five priority areas of the City Council's strategic plan, it will also demonstrate to the citizens of Arvada this council's commitment to the city's stated values and mission, specifically delivering superior services that enhance the lives of everyone in the community. Therefore, I ask the council to use its position to advocate and push for implementation of the idea of mobile ballot boxes to George Stern, our Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder. Promoting and instituting mobile ballot boxes would allow Arvada to be a model, not only to other cities in Jeffco, but in Colorado. Mobile ballot boxes have already been used in other countries as recently as July 2020 to empower voters quarantined with COVID-19. Mobile ballot boxes could also benefit the elderly, people who are physically challenged, and anyone else who might otherwise be isolated or disenfranchised from voting due to mobility, transportation, or health. Arvada currently only has five ballot drop-offs and one polling center for a 33-square-mile area and over 112,000 active and historical voters. Due to the current trials facing our postal service, Governor Polis has already advised Coloradans not to mail their ballots after October 24. This reality makes the need for innovative ideas like mobile ballot boxes even more essential because 99.8% of Coloradans cast their ballots by mail. Therefore, it would benefit the Arvada City Council to empower as many of its citizens as possible to feel confident that their vote will be received on time and be counted. According to Gallup's Civic Engagement Index scores, citizens who feel like they are engaged and thriving in their community are twice as likely as those who feel like they are suffering to give up their time, effort, and money. So many people are suffering because of this pandemic. Mobile ballot boxes would help people's morale, and thus, the City Council's actions would provide a diverse and long-term return on a short-term investment. Spearheading such an effort to provide mobile ballot boxes in Arvada will provide economic returns, bring notoriety to Arvada and its leaders, and help make manifest the vibrant community in which all citizens can participate and thrive. So if you'd like more logistics than my little three-minute elevator pitch includes, I'd be happy to email or speak with you all further at an appropriate time. And I really thank you for your consideration of mobile ballot boxes.
Thank you very much. First, I've heard of this concept. We can't really give authorization tonight, obviously. It's something we can talk about, and we can surely talk to the county clerk in terms of the feasibility and legality of it.
Thank you. I appreciate.
We'll have that conversation. You bet. Thanks for coming. Anybody else that wishes to address City Council during public comment on item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. We have no consent agenda tonight. And we do have some resolutions. The first is a resolution authorizing the assignment of the city of Arvada's private activity bond allocation to the Jefferson County Housing Authority, doing business as Foothills Regional Housing, pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item before you would authorize the allocation of our private activity bond to Foothills, as you've described. This would enable a project that actually you very recently heard in a public hearing, I believe, on a planned unit development application to go forward for an 88-unit senior housing project. So we are recommending the approval of this allocation. We also have, for the, to speak on this, if it does, if there's any questions, we have the Foothills Regional Housing Executive Director, Lisa Rosendahl, Laurie Rosendahl, I believe, is available to answer any questions. Amy Case, the Chief Financial Officer, as well as our Housing Manager, Carrie Espinoza, is also available if you have any questions specifically about this action tonight.
Very good. Open it up for City Council questions or action. Ms. Ford.
I'll make a motion if there are.
You may proceed.
Comments. I move that R 20-065, a resolution authorizing the assignment of the city of Arvada's private activity bond allocation to the Jefferson County Housing Authority, doing business as Foothills Regional Housing, pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act, be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Next, we have a Resolution 20066, a resolution authorizing the assignment of the city of Arvada's private activity bond allocation to Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. Mr. Devon.
Excuse me. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a very similar resolution as what you just passed. This would allocate the private activity bond allocation to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, or CHAPA, in order to, again, facilitate and support the project that was referenced in the earlier resolution. And we are recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Pfeifer.
Yeah, if there's any questions, I'll make the motion.
You may proceed.
I move that Resolution 20-066, a resolution authorizing the assignment of the city of Arvada's private activity bond allocation to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act, be approved.
All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. That completes our resolutions. Now, we're going to have an entertaining reading of ordinances on first reading by Ms. Miller.
You're setting the bar too high, Your Honor. Here we go. Council Bill 20-021, an ordinance repealing and reenacting, Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulation of the Arvada City Code through the adoption of general and administrative provisions and the adoption by reference of the 2018 International Building Code, the 2018 International Residential Code, the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, the 2018 International Existing Building Code, the 2018 International Fuel-Gas Code, the 2018 International Mechanical Code, the 2018 International Plumbing Code, the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Did I miss a line there?
You're good.
All right. The state adopted National Electrical Code and the adoption of the penalties for violations thereof. Council Bill 20-22, an ordinance repealing and reenacting, Chapter 42 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code, through adoption by reference of the 2018 International Fire Code, published by the International Code Council, and establishing penalties for violation thereof. Council Bill 20-023, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the city of Arvada and the Regional Transportation District, RTD, for the management and operation of the Old Town Transit Hub via shared parking and revenue service. Council Bill 20-024, an ordinance amending Article 3 Sales and Use Tax and Article 5 Lodging Tax of Chapter 98 Taxation of the Arvada City Code, be all be approved on first reading ordered publish in full, and public hearing be set for September 14, 2020, at 6:15 p.m.
Thank you. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero on first reading. Okay, next, we will move on to our other item, which is the appeal of the Director's decision to issue a certificate of compliance to Grandview Station. This is an administrative appeal pursuant to Land Development Code, Section 8-2-5-5, capital B, per N. And at this time, I'll make it clear that no new evidence or public comment may be received by City Council. As part of the appeal, City Council may only consider public comment previously submitted to the Design Review Committee or the Community Development Director. And I believe each council member will indicate that they have reviewed in full the lengthy presentation given at the Design Review Committee, which was a Zoom meeting. We were, each provided an opportunity to have that. We've each received numerous materials that we have all reviewed in preparation for tonight's administrative appeal. Ms. Ford.
Mayor, I'd like to be excused due to the signing of the petition, or recused, excuse me.
Right. So I entertain a motion to recuse. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we recuse Councilmember Ford from this issue.
And if you'll vote on that. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Ford not voting, and she is recused. This was a situation where Ms. Ford signed a petition before she knew that this matter would ever come before City Council. And as such, she has chosen to recuse, and we have agreed to that. Okay, so we have agreed to 30 minutes per side. The appellant can divide their time as they wish. And so we will hear from the appellant first, and then the appellee for up to 30 minutes. And to the extent that the appellant has reserved time, we'll have final comments from the appellant. Then we'll open it up for City Council questions and action.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I did have a few introductory comments prior to us beginning, if that's okay with you.
You may.
Just to establish some of the procedural history here, this appeal of the issuance of a certificate of compliance with the Old Town Design Review Guidelines comes before City Council concerning the development of property located at 7315 and 7317 Grandview Avenue and 7318 West 57th Avenue. The project is being proposed by the owner of the property, Grandview Station LLC, otherwise known as the applicant. The application being heard tonight on appeal is the second application submitted for the project requesting the issuance of a certificate of compliance. The initial application was heard by City Council on December 16, 2019, and based on council's vote, a certificate of compliance was not issued. Subsequently, City Council found good cause to allow a successive application to be filed by the applicant. The applicant submitted its second application to the Director of Community and Economic Development for a certificate of compliance of the Old Town Design Review Guidelines. The application was referred to and reviewed by the Design Review Advisory Committee, the DRC. And after review of the staff report on application and review of the DRC's advisory findings, the director approved the application and issued a certificate of compliance. Lori Drenka, an adjacent landowner to the property, appealed the Director's decision to issue the certificate of compliance up to City Council. Parties to the appeal were sent notice of the appeal and are here tonight. To give some context for the application of Design Review Guidelines, all developments within Old Town Arvada are subject to development standards which apply to a property based on the property's location within one of seven zoning sub-districts in Old Town. Development standards include aspects of a development such as mass, setbacks, and height. In addition, all developments, regardless of their specific location within Old Town, are subject to the design guidelines established by the Old Town Arvada Design Review Guidelines. Design guidelines govern the aesthetic appearance of property, such as the look and spacing of windows, paint color, or brick pattern. Since the property, which is the subject of the appeal tonight, is located in Old Town Arvada, the proposed development must meet both the applicable development standards in the Old Town Grandview zoning sub-district and the design guidelines of the Old Town Design Review Guidelines before construction can commence. Whether or not the project meets the development standards for OTGV zoning subject district is not at issue before council tonight. Rather, council's discussion and determination tonight must focus on whether the project meets or qualifies for a waiver of applicable design guidelines contained in the Old Town Design Review Guidelines, and thus, whether the project qualifies for issuance of a certificate of compliance with the design guidelines. In terms of the scope of council's review tonight and potential decisions pursuant to the Land Development Code, City Council, in hearing this appeal of the Director's issuance of a certificate of compliance, may decide that the decision is incorrect and thus reverse and correct the decision, approving the original application. They can decide it's incorrect, approve the original application with conditions, or deny the original application. If council determines the decision is correct, the council shall affirm the decision. If council determines the decision is partially correct, council may affirm in part, deny in part, or place conditions on the original application. If council determines the decision was not supported by substantial competent evidence, but that such evidence could reasonably be presented, council may remand the original application to the Director with instructions as to what additional information must be provided. In reaching its decision, City Council may not consider any information obtained outside of the appeal process and may not receive new evidence that was not presented previously to the Director or during the Design Review Advisory Committee meeting. Those materials are contained within City Council's packet and were referenced earlier by the mayor. In terms of the standard of review, while council may consider the previous determinations as part of its decision, it is not bound by the previous determinations of the Director or the recommendation of the Design Review Advisory Committee. Rather, council should make its decision based on a review of the record evidence, together with the arguments advanced on appeal. Your Honor, you've already outlined. Your Honor, you've already outlined the process for the appeal, and so now I think we're ready to proceed.
Very good. Mr. Foster? And if our timekeeper would set it at 30 minutes, to the extent that there are any objections made by either council during presentations, I would ask that the timekeeper stop the running of the time until we've ruled on objections. Okay.
May I place my MacBook on the podium, or how shall I do that?
I think that's fine. Just make sure you're below the camera there so that...
Below the camera?
Do you see the camera at the top of that?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I just wanted to...
Yep.
Take a time...
You bet.
Thank you.
Again, do we... For my timekeeping purposes, I'm not seeing that we've changed the time. Is that... You need me to do that? I'll do it.
I have it, Your Honor.
Do you have it?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, Ms. Drenka, you may proceed.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. For the record, I'm Lori Drenka, 7401 Grandview Avenue. When my husband and I purchased our property in Old Town just over 15 years ago, I felt as though I was not only being entrusted with a piece of history, but I also felt an obligation to this community. I understood that this would require not only an investment of time and money, but it would require passion, respect, and commitment to the community. I believe my record speaks for itself. As many of you know, the amount of time that I have put not only into my property and my business, but into my community, being part of boards, committees, community focus groups, et cetera. So then what prompts a person like me to spend over a year and a half incurring over $100,000 in attorney's fees for a cause? Nearly 2,500 people, about one-third of them being Arvada residents and many Old Town property owners, Arvada Historical Society, Jefferson County Historic Commission, CPI and History Colorado have all pledged their support and cheered me on to continue the quest for fairness, to not demolish historic structures in our historic district for the sake of making a buck. This developer bought the property without entitlements in place, without a three-story variance, and without a guarantee that he could make a pile of money off of this. In fact, he paid a very low price for the house at 7317 Grandview, by his own admission at the DRC meeting, in spite of the fact that we offered the former owners and he a respectable amount. I understand that city planners and staff have spent quite a bit of time working with the developer. The city is not obligated to make him rich any more than you are obligated to ensure a return on my investment in Old Town. That's my responsibility.
Mr. Mayor?
You have the figures...
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but the criteria was very clear. My name is Parker Semler. I'm going to be doing the contrary argument. Nothing that's been said so far has anything to do with design guidelines. It's design guidelines and waivers that are before you. I would ask that you ask the appellant to tailor her argument to design guidelines and waivers with respect to the certificate of compliance.
Mr. Foster?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, these are all facts of the record that were presented to the DRC. That was the only time that public records allowed. These are facts that were presented to the DRC. They are relevant to the ultimate decision. Whether or not History Colorado and other organizations supported to support the demolition of this building is entirely relevant. That was part of the public record, and Ms. Drenka just cited that. She also recited the amount of money that the developer purchased the property for. Again, a relevant component to get into economic hardship.
I think there's...
Your Honor, if I may respond, I'm done. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize. Mr. Foster brings up another very important point that I actually am very concerned about, which is that economic hardship was not part of the Director's decision. That was not the waiver that was exercised.
Your Honor, I apologize for interrupting both of you in advance, but none of this is getting recorded. We need to get another mic up there so that we can have this on the record. So we wanted to make sure that we're able to do that. Ms. Knalbach is doing that right now.
Okay, great.
Shall I put my mask back on?
You're fine.
Should we... Should I do a quick reiteration just so we have someone on the record?
So we have the record, yes.
Mayor, can whoever's dinging on our Zoom, can they just stop? Can we mute them?
I think it's Ms. Drenka's laptop sitting on top of another laptop.
No, I think it's somebody else, but can we just make sure it stops?
It's been happening the whole meeting.
Yeah, it's been happening the whole meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have the floor?
Let's go back to the original objection.
Thank you, Your Honor. What I will do, just for the record, we have all noted that a microphone had not been utilized, so this is a reiteration of a couple of objections that Parker Semler, on behalf of Grandview Station LLC, has offered to the mayor. So my first objection, respectfully to Ms. Drenka, is that a great deal of her initial presentation seemed to be going over facts in terms of the amount of money she had spent, the amount of different people that had signed off on her cause, and I respectfully objected on the grounds that that has nothing to do with whether or not the certificate of compliance was properly issued by your director, and that this needs to be limited, per statement of your council, to the validity or invalidity of the design guidelines, whether they've been conformed with, and whether the few that haven't been were subject to a validly utilized waiver. So that's where we started. Mr. Foster, I'm going to allow... I'm going to turn the mic over to him, but I'll make my other objections, so I'm doing them all at the same time, maybe save a little bit of time. Mr. Foster offered up the argument that these were all relevant points and that he anchored all of that by making reference to economic hardship. I then made... I wanted to then make another point with respect to economic hardship, which is the Director did not rely upon the economic hardship waiver in issuing the certificate of compliance. He relied upon waivers B and D. Economic hardship, I believe, is A. I will acknowledge that economic hardship was discussed at the DRC committee meeting, but it was a discussion that then was not utilized by the Director. And what this council needs to be focused on and what the presentation needs to be focused on is whether or not the decision by the Director was proper. The Director did not rely upon economic hardship, and I will continue for the record, for appellate purposes, to object to any utilization or arguments countering the economic hardship waiver. It's simply not pertinent and applicable to the discussion tonight.
Thank you.
And at that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Foster.
Mr. Foster, and you may remove... Gentlemen, you may each remove your masks while you're speaking.
Kind of sweaty under there.
Yeah.
David Foster here on behalf of Ms. Drenka.
Wait, Mr. Foster, push your mask back on. You look... I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Knew that was coming.
Mr. Foster and I have a history.
Yes, we do. Would you like my mask?
No.
Let me start near the end of this, and that is, you sit in the position of the planning director. You don't sit in the position of the planning director after he's made his determination. You sit in the position of the planning director as though he hasn't made his determination, which means you take all of the evidence and information that was a part of the public record, and you determine whether or not the design criteria met, the demolition criteria met, whether or not there was an economic hardship. By the way, and I hope this isn't the case tonight, you have an opportunity to determine that there was an economic hardship. You can make that determination because you sit in the role of the planning director. And so all of the evidence that was presented at the DRC, which is the only time that there is public evidence allowed in this process, is entirely part of the record, is entirely for you to review and peruse and make your own independent determinations as though you are the planning director. The information that Ms. Drenka has already outlined in terms of a number of the letters of opposition to demolition were in the record. The point that Ms. Drenka made in terms of the amount of money that the property cost is in the record because that deals with economic hardship. How are you to make an economic hardship determination if you don't know how much money the developer spent and all of the other evidence that's in the record? So that's... I just think we have a fundamental disagreement in terms of the role that you play, and the role that you play is as the planning director, with the evidence, to make your own independent determination.
Okay. Mr. Foster, I would indicate that, yes, there are certain aspects of what Ms. Drenka has testified thus far are consistent with the record, but I would say that there are certain aspects of what she's talked about in terms of her role in the community, the committee she's served on, how much she's spent in attorney's fees. None of that was in the record. And what I'm going to say to council is, we've all reviewed this, and I'm going to ask council to decipher through the presentations of both sides tonight and just consider the evidence that was presented at that time. There may be some other things that slip in here, but from my perspective, our decision's going to be based upon the evidence that came in at the Design Review Committee, and if something else slips in, I'm expecting council to be able to discern from their observation and watching that and reading all the materials between what was said then and what additional might be said tonight.
Understood.
Okay. And I'm going to ask for our city attorney to give us some input on the economic hardship issue.
At this point in time or during your council questions in action?
Why don't you do it now so that as they're making their presentations, what's going to be the appropriate way to address it?
Sure. So if we're looking at economic... The economic waiver, economic feasibility, it's not going to be related to... The only testimony I've heard thus far about anything economic-related is about Ms. Drenka's expenditures related to this particular matter. Those are not going to be relevant to the council's determination on the economic feasibility of this particular project. It would have to be statements more related to rehabilitation of the properties and things like that.
Okay. And just to try to avoid future objections, Ms. Morris, if I wasn't clear, my point, and whether it's wrong or right, I will let you weigh in on, but my point is that the economic feasibility waiver was not utilized by the Director, and therefore, if there is going to be a series of presentations attacking that waiver, that's completely inappropriate because it's not the basis upon which he made his decision. And while it was discussed by the DRC, it's not what he relied upon in rendering a decision, so I don't see the applicability or the relevance of the economic feasibility, the attack on the economic feasibility, when in fact, that's not at issue in the decision. And therefore, would continue to object for appellate purposes.
Your Honor, would you like me to respond?
Yes, I would, and particularly in light of Mr. Foster's statement that, you know, we now stand in the shoes of the planning director and have the ability to consider any of the evidence that was presented before the DRC in making our determination.
Yes, and I agree with Mr. Foster on this point. Under the Land Development Code Section 8255, which discusses the scope of review for council, it indicates that the scope of review of an administrative appeal is limited to the relevant issues raised in the request for appeal. So it's the request for appeal that frames the issues and the topics, and again, council is not bound by the determination of the Director, but you may consider it as part of your determination, but you... Your review is not limited in scope just to the Director's determination.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Want me to stand here all night holding this microphone?
Miss... Okay, Ms. Drenka.
Can I? Okay, thank you. Okay. You have the figures before you that were provided by Karen Miller, and these show that there's a way that this developer... For this developer to come out whole from this, but not rich off this deal. Additionally, it shows that each of these properties can be evaluated individually. I know that it takes more than money to rehabilitate a historic building because I, like many others, have done it. We heard from Tammy Fontenot indicating that she reached out with interest for those properties with no response. We've heard from owners like Kent Holloway, Deborah Andrews, and Steve Howard. Those are people you want in our community, not Keen Palmer, who's caused hardship to all of us for years in his attempt to make money. Please understand that I don't want the rundown houses that degrade, disgrace, and endanger our entire district. I want something done as much as anyone. Two plans were submitted during DRC meeting that would not require demolishing the two houses on Grandview and serve as an example that this isn't an all-or-nothing situation. After renting the house at 7317 from Mr. Palmer for over four years, putting $64,000 into his pocket, I can tell you the interior of that house was in beautiful shape due to renovations done by my talented husband that remains today and was shown in your packet during Rogers' presentation in the news clip provided by my daughter Aubrey. Scott Spears and Pete Gazura, who are not only property owners but members of DRC, agreed that these numbers don't jive and voted to save at least one, if not both, of these houses on Grandview from demolition. These guys devote so much of their time to our district and have a true feel for what goes on and the needs of the district. I reached out to Keen Palmer through my attorney nearly half a dozen times since last December to meet and discuss alternatives to no avail. My healing arts business has been essentially closed since March 17th with half our employees furloughed and the other half of us working our tails off, making masks, running open-air boutiques, and doing anything we can to help our community, our neighbors, and our business survive. I'm so pleased with the many developments the City of Arvada has done and will have to our north, south, east, and west with fantastic plans in place to become more environmentally conscious, and I applaud you all for the job that you do to ensure success of our city. I ask that you please do not allow the destruction of the heart of our city and grant this appeal once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the timekeeper tell Mr. Foster how much time he's got?
Twenty-five fifty.
Thank you.
Twenty-five fifty. And may I ask a favor? Will you let me know if I'm not done by five minutes? Will you just kind of holler at me? So I'd like to reserve five minutes for my rebuttal. Again, my name's David Foster. I've been here a few times on this project. I appreciate the opportunity to be here again on this appeal. I ran across a quote the other day, and it's, "People's minds are changed through observation and not through argument." That's Will Rogers. Funny coming from a lawyer, but I intend, through this appeal and through observation, to show that this project does not meet many of the design review criteria. The project just doesn't fit in this particular location. At least one, but more likely three, of the residential structures do not meet the demolition criteria. The developer isn't right for this historic site through his own admission at the DRC. And finally, the overwhelming community support for Old Town and in turn, opposition to this project. So the standard of view has been discussed. I won't belabor that point. So let's talk about... Can you advance the slide? I don't... And one more? So I wanted to start with old news, and that is, the project was denied last December, as you've heard, and I take some ownership in that particular hearing of not spending enough time discussing the design standards and spending too much time focused on the demolition standards. So tonight, we're going to reverse course a bit, and we're going to focus on the design guidelines and some of those standards, not to the extent that we did at DRC. I will not do that to you all, I promise. But the record is replete with design review analysis confirming that this project doesn't meet up to 47 of those guidelines. And I direct your attention to page 383 of the record, which identifies at least 47 of the design guidelines not met. Deborah Andrews, an architect, Old Town property owner here tonight, within the record, pages 255 and 265, does her own analysis of how this project doesn't meet the design guidelines. We had our own analysis presented to the DRC, which you will find at pages 358 through 383, based on Norrie Winter's letter. Norrie Winter, for those of you who are familiar, Norrie actually was your consultant. You paid him back in 2013 to actually draft those design guidelines. I happen to know Norrie because of some of the work that I've done around, and I called him, and I sent him this proposal, and in return, he sent his review and analysis, which is, again, in the record. And you will see, I've also included in the record pages 303 to 311... to 311, not only his letter, but you will see his quite accomplished resume, which was a part of the record as well. So let's take a deeper dive quickly into a couple of the specific design guidelines. First, context, 5.1, and you can find this on page 359 of your record. And context here is important. Context is identified as, "Design: A new building to reflect its time while respecting key features of its context. In the Arvada Downtown Historic District, relating to the context is especially important." Here's Norah's comments. "The building appears massive and out of scale with the context. This is especially true as viewed from 57th Avenue and from Grandview where the east and west sides will be highly visible. Slight variations in materials and wall inserts are proposed as a means of reducing scale, but these are superficial in reducing the perceived mass of this building. This is especially a concern as it will be seen from the transit plaza across the street." And later, in that same slide, you'll read, "The building forms prohibited in the code do not include parking structures in this character area because none were supposed to be constructed there. As a result, there are no specific guidelines for that building type in Grandview." Context is important. The applicant, the developer, is asking to remove three structures, three residential structures, and replace it with a mixed-use parking structure. And in this particular instance, the Grandview character area allows for two stories and 28 feet in height. Yes, they have a variance. They have a variance from the Board of Adjustment for three stories within the same height, but that variance doesn't apply to the entire Grandview District. It applies just to that site. So the context is, the Grandview character area of two stories and 28 feet, not the Webster District. And we've had some issues here, but the Webster District, just down the street, which is where the Gen Building is, allows for three stories and 35 feet as a right, not through a variance. And so the context is different. And then add to this, that this particular building is being placed not on the corner like the Gen Building is, but smack dab in the middle of the block. And that's why it doesn't make sense, and that's why context matters. And again, the mixed-use parking structure not even allowed in this district. Next issue, tradition, 5.19. Again, this is in the record at page 361. "Maintain the traditional size of buildings as perceived at the street level." The comment here, "Too much of the building is at three stories in height. The Grandview character area was envisioned to be two stories. Any three-story portions of a building are limited in percentage of the footprint of the overall structure. The vast majority of the building as proposed is three stories and is contrary to the design guidelines. If any third floor is to be permitted, it should be substantially less." Yes, they have a variance, but that doesn't mean you have to use it all. That doesn't mean you have to build lot line to lot line, front to back, throughout the entire piece of this property. And again, that tradition is important. Think also of this, and it relates back to context a bit, but it also is the tradition. Here, the tradition has been residential. Again, three contributing residential structures. Those three residential structures have front setbacks, rear setbacks, side setbacks. They sit on half of the block. And in this particular instance, they're all being demolished. The lots are being joined, and then a building that's replacing it takes up all four of those parcels. And so that's not the traditional spacing that is identified as fitting within this tradition of this character area. Finally, the design guideline on street activation, as it relates particularly to West 57th Avenue facade. And here you'll find the evidence in the record at pages 360, 362, 366, and 367. Beginning with maintaining the traditional orientation of a building to the street, Norah's comment, "This project faces two primary streets. However, the proposal completely ignores one of them in terms of complying with the standards and guidelines. The 57th Avenue facade is treated as a service area. This violates the design guidelines. The facades on both streets, Grandview and 57th, should meet the guidelines for creating pedestrian-friendly street edges." We saw a project presented back in December. The new project has added fake windows. It hasn't activated 57th at all. It looks better, I'll give you that, but they're fake windows. And there's no new 57th Street activation. Listen, we didn't decide to build from one block to the other block, creating what is entirely a big problem, and that's two fronts. That's not our problem. But those are the design guidelines that say activate both frontages. 57th is a frontage, and it should, and it must be, activated. And in this particular instance, all it has is the garage to the parking structure in this particular facility. The second area for discussion is demolition criteria. The city attorney and I have had our discussions over the last 18 months on this particular issue. We're just not going to agree as to whether or not the demolition criteria must be met and what role you play in the demolition criteria. But let me say that I believe that the criteria is in the design review guidelines. The criteria must be met. We know that if it's not met, you need to seek a waiver. And in this particular instance, the waiver on economic hardship wasn't granted, but it was based on a couple of other elements within the planning director's purview. Directing your attention to the record on page 353, this is demolition criteria A6. We're in agreement with your planning staff when they have made a determination, and the DRC, that A6 wasn't met. This demolition criteria wasn't met. What is it? Essentially, and I'm getting to the bottom where they discuss this demolition criteria, is the new design proposed in its place compatible? That's one of the standards that they ask. When you're demolishing a historic structure, is the new structure compatible? And the determination was, no. A6 isn't met. So instead of the economic hardship, your planning director made a determination and used a different waiver criteria. He used the economic hardship back in December. In this particular instance, he says that the waiver criteria under B and D are applicable. B, this is the waiver criteria from the code, "The proposed land use activity is of a nature that will not undermine, impair, or conflict with the intent of the applicable zone district and is compatible with both the distinctive characteristics of the historic district and the Old Town District." Well, the A6 standard that we're appealing from is compatibility. And the planning director has made a determination that, in fact, the waiver for compatibility is appropriate. Doesn't work. Doesn't work. It's internally inconsistent. Can't both find it incompatible and compatible at the same time in order to grant the waiver. And then goes on to use the other waiver criteria, and that is D. D says, "The proposed land use activity is of a comparable architectural and historical value and authenticity." Folks, we're demolishing a building. There is no way a new building can have the same architectural and historical value and, I thought, authenticity as the three contributing structures that you're demolishing. That's preposterous. And so the very waivers that have been granted in this particular case because economic hardship was found not to be relevant are internally inconsistent with the nature of demolition. And so in this case, there is no waiver available for this demolition. There's no waiver available. So I asked, I asked the city council, so now what? So now the city attorney and I are at odds again. You don't have a waiver. You find that the demolition criteria is met. I don't think you can demolish the building under that circumstance. The city attorney would argue 90 days is the only remedy that you have. We're just going to be at odds there. Fortunately, that's what lawyers do. I guess I am arguing a bit. But most of this is observation, I hope. Third, I believe that this is the wrong developer for this, for this site. And I'm going to cite two examples within the code, within the DRC meeting that we transcribed. The first is a question asked by DRC member Will Cheever. "If you could speak to the tax credit question that came up, what kind of impact that has on the proposed development that you're looking at?" Answer from Mr. Palmer. "I can't, to be honest. I don't know the tax credit that's available for the development we're looking at. I can say, and going back to Karen Miller's observation, there may be some tax credit available." Karen Miller's presentation is on pages 216 and 220 in the record, identifying a 45% state and federal tax credit that's available. Here's a developer who's been working on this site for six or seven years and doesn't know that there's a tax credit available to rehabilitate and preserve contributing structures in Old Town Historic District. Second, DRC member Scott Spears asks, "Just by curiosity, why did the cost go up so much from 2014 to 2019 on these properties?" This is an issue that Mr. Jones and I had a conversation about back in December. Here's the answer. Mr. Palmer, "So the costs that were presented in those engineering reports were order-of-magnitude estimates, which are exactly that, order of magnitude. So they're not based on a specific costing exercise. Our rates are from a qualified GC based on the actual scope of work and market labor and material rates at that time. And I think more importantly, those cost estimates were for a residential application, which doesn't require everything to be brought up to current code." Why did they go up so dramatically? The developer decided, instead of rehabilitating the historic residential structures on that site, he was going to redo them. He was going to change the use entirely. He was going to take a residential building code and turn it up on its head and now meet the commercial building code. And that's why those numbers were inflated as they were. Had he just gone back and used the cost estimates from preserving it in its residential status, which Ms. Drenka's mother-in-law lived in for a number of years, we might not be here because he may have preserved those two residential structures and developed on the backside. That's why he's not the right developer to be developing within Old Town Arvada Historic District. Finally, I would just say, and the record has all of this evidence as well, that at some point, Old Town no longer is Old Town, and it becomes Newtown. And you have a series of people who have signed many, many petitions and written such thoughtful comments to all of you about how important Old Town is to them. And we just ask you tonight to say no to this project, to overturn the decision of the planning director and send this project back to the starting gate. And appreciate your time, and I presume I have some time left.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
Your Honor, may I take my mask off?
Yes, of course. Yes.
And do you know me well enough to tell me to put it back on again?
(laughing)
All right. I didn't realize I was going to be dealing with a smaller podium. I would have gotten a bigger boat.
First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Foster for his comments. He's obviously a very refined attorney. He knows what he's doing. He's been working on this project for some 18 months. I've been working on this presentation for less than 18 days. But I do think that there are, in 18 days, I think I can counter comments and persuade this council that its decision-makers should be supported. You should be endorsing your staff. You should be endorsing your design review committee, and you should be endorsing your director. I had a little outline here myself, having to do with the standard of review. We know it's de novo. We know that you can consider anything that's in the record. As the, as your staff put it, maybe it's a little bit easier to understand than silly Latin term that's left over from God knows when. The council can determine whether the decision was correct based upon the evidence presented to the community develop, development director. That's what, that's what you're here to do tonight. So I thought I would, I would share a couple of things with respect to how do judges act outside a city council? How do people take evidence? How do you take criteria? What should you grasp a hold of to help you in your decision-making and feel comfortable about it? And at the end of the day, because I've talked to a lot of district court judges, I do a lot of litigation, you know, they've got this element of static, that they've just got to clear out of their decision-making. And they've got this element of, obviously, what are the facts? What's the law? How do you apply the facts to the law? But more importantly, when you get your facts, who's credible and who should you rely upon? And in this case, what do we have? We've got what I would sort of describe as three parties. It's almost a triumphant relationship. Obviously, you've got the two parties on either side of the room. We've got Grandview that's come in here. Grandview, Grandview has spent five years in a very dedicated fashion, having meetings with the community, meetings with your staff. They've, they've listened. They've got two ears, one mouth, so they've done a good job of listening, and they do respect, and they do, they respect the Old Town District. They, they do respect the history, but there's also got to be a give and take with progress. So that's one party. You've got another party, the Drenkas. They've been here. They live in a, I believe, a house that's on the Landmark Commission. They live next door. They're going to be very sensitive to it, and you can understand the emotional appeal that's come from them. Ms. Drenka, I've shared with you, $100,000 she's spent fighting this. But that can't be a sympathy factor. It can't, that's, that's not a part of your decision. And who else is the, who else is the, the peak, in my opinion, of this pyramid? The peak is your staff, and it's the design review committee that you all appointed. And they have overwhelmingly advised you to move this, this development forward. So when you've got advocates, and one advocate came in and worked closely with the, with the city and with, and with the public to try to conform with the guidelines that are part of your land development code. So what have they done? They've worked really hard to conform. What has Ms. Drenka and Mr. Drenka done? They've worked really hard to obfuscate, fight, derail, and say, "No, it's not right." And that's their right and privilege. I am not, I am not saying that in any kind of a condensating manner, but one is trying to work to build something, one is saying what they're working on is inappropriate. Now, in my mind, if I'm making a decision, those two kind of got to at least balance one another out. Maybe you like one a little more than the other. That's your own personal opinion. We're here for design guidelines, which I am going to get to, and to waivers. But who should you really listen to? Once again, you should be listening to your staff and to the DRC and to your director, all of whom are here to work their tails off to do what is best for Arvada. They are the ones you should be listening to. And really, based on that alone, without even getting into a guideline or a waiver, I think most of you, if not all of you, should be comfortable endorsing this project. But let's talk about, let's talk about some of the guidelines and the waivers here, which is, you know, more specific reason we're here tonight. But I wanted to help you a little bit with how another, other judges cut the static and find a way to focus on how to make a good decision. All right. I'm going to briefly go through some of Arvada's goals and then the intent and purpose of the design guidelines. You know, Arvada's comprehensive plan, and let's go to slide, my third slide, please. I don't know who's moving these slides. Yeah, the next one. Next one after, yeah, building form. That one, nope, go back one, please. Thank you very much. So these are outlined here. I'm going to read slightly longer renditions. "Arvada's comprehensive plan is to promote redevelopment of mixed-use areas to include transit-supportive residential densities." Now, one of Norah, Norah Winter's final comments was, "The density's not appropriate." Well, there's nothing, there's nothing that supports that conclusion in the Old Town guidelines. There's nothing that says you can't have this density here. And to that point, I also would like to remind you, and I don't know what the case is here, one way or another. He clearly was an advocate for the Drenkas. I don't know if he's paid for that letter. I don't know what his hourly rate was. I don't know if he's a hired gun. One thing I will tell you is I hire a lot of expert witnesses, and many times over my career, I've probably had it happen six or eight times out of calling So experts often get retained, and they will find a way to write a letter that supports whatever the cause is that's paying them. And it's not insincere. They, you know, anybody that's good can give a, a, a presentation in favor of one side or the other side. Sometimes it's the first group that gets there. I don't know this for a fact either. He might have given our side a good letter if we contacted him first. But the density point he makes at the end of his letter is simply wrong and misplaced, which leads me to believe maybe he's a preservation advocate, which is why he would err on the side of advocacy instead of accuracy. And there's going to be several other circumstances where you're going to have advocacy instead of accuracy here. Another point, "The city will encourage higher-density mixed-use developments near future transit stations." Well, that's goal 4.1. Well, that's certainly being satisfied by this, by this project. "Arvada will encourage redevelopment in key redevelopment areas, which are characterized to include blighted conditions, low sales tax, and deterioration of housing conditions." Well, we know three of the four prop, three of the four structures are virtually blighted. They are completely lacking in structural support, and the structural support is one of the elements that set forth in how and why they should be preserved. You're not supposed to go into something and take a shell and pretend it was what it was 100 years ago. It's supposed to already have that structural support, and three of these four buildings don't have that. So that's another reason why they real, it's not that detrimental to historic Old Town to take down buildings that are lacking in structural support. One of them does, but that also, that's also nicks away at their argument that three out of the 11 residential ones are going. Never mind the point that my letter points out that I think there's 44 contributing buildings. So if you've got one that you can really preserve, it's one in 44. That is not going to damage Old Town's Historic District. And while I'm on that point, there was a little bit of a scare tactic used earlier that, "Oh, my God, if we lose all of this, we might be de-designated." I went looking for cases. There's not a case out there that, that a district was de-designated for taking down unsound buildings lacking structural integrity. It's never happened anywhere in the country, as best as I can tell. Okay, others, other quotes here. Let's jump ahead to the, to the intent and purpose of the, of the, of the Old Town Guidelines. "The Old Town zoning district is intended to promote a mixture of commercial and residential uses," commercial and residential, we learned that, "in order to provide a full range of professional and business offices, retail sales, and services, plus a variety of residential uses in an urban 24-hour downtown environment." And then I skipped some to be candid, although the appropriate application of the, you know, through the appropriate application of the design guidelines. So Mr. Foster puts forth really four arguments, fighting this appeal, that the project fails to meet design guidelines, you know? And again, this is just a great example of advocacy that overwhelms accuracy. Your own, your own, your own staff tells you that you're, you're batting either 69 of 73 or 70 of 73. I was a little confused by the documents. It's either three or four, and they're partial waivers. They're not even total waivers. I haven't appeared before you before. I haven't argued a case here before you, but I ask all of you, from your own experience, how many projects of any significance have only had to have three or four waivers? I mean, I've seen other projects in other cities where they need 10, 15, sometimes it's 30, 35. Again, Grand View has done an incredible job working with your staff to minimize the waivers that you even have to consider whether or not they were issued properly. Statistically, this thing's a home run that way. And how much time do I have?
At 19:08.
I'm at 19:08?
Yes.
Thanks very much. There's another argument that fails to meet demolition criteria. Here, Mr. Foster, I've, it's in the record, I've reviewed it from the DRC meeting. He alluded to it here, you know? Again, it's advocacy over accuracy. He wants to tell you that you've got the right to regulate whether these are demoed or not, whether they can be demoed. It's simply not in your code. I know that he challenged your city attorney, you know, stating, "But that's your opinion, right?" Now, it's just not appropriate. The language is not there. It's not an accurate statement to say you can do anything but delay demo for 90 days. I don't know why it's not there, but it's simply not there, and you can't invent it. Another argument is that the, that the project is contrary to the overreaching purpose and intent of the design guidelines. I just read the intent of the design guidelines. Sure sounds like there is a very viable dovetail, and this comports with it. And why wouldn't it? You know, let's, you know, at, at the end of the day, look at this project. This project, you know, it may, it may go from one street to the other, but the front of it's beautiful. It is, you know, I used a quote in my letter borrowing from the, in fact, let's go to slide, let's click through a couple of slides and see if I can stop you. Next, please, next, next, next. This is, this was my complaint about, oh, next. Keep going. Next. All right. Now, I put some of this in my letter, but I didn't put all of it in the letter, but I do want to read it for the record. "Many of the buildings within the district were designed to fulfill more than one function, such as business blocks, which had commercial spaces on the ground floor, and living quarters or community halls on the upper floor. This combination of building functions within the downtown area typified Arvada's early history. Diversity of function led to the variety of construction materials, styles, landscape, and setbacks within the district. Commercial buildings within the district are typically constructed of red, light, tan, or yellow brick, with flat roofs, simple detailing, mostly confided to cornices and generous display windows facing the street. These buildings generally extend to the property line from side to side, with front walls aligned with the sidewalks." Now, that, those are direct quotes from how Arvada described itself in its 1998 application to the National Park Service in order to be, to seek its historical designation. It's a long quote, but I'd ask you to keep it in mind. If that's what Arvada wanted to sell itself as in order to help get the historic designation, what does this design do? It's red brick, large display windows, a, a period metal header over the windows. It incorporates the parapits that run up and down the street, you know, the brick. For those that don't know, it's the brick area above a natural roof to give it architectural design. Now, this one is at 16 feet. It's actually lower than almost any of them, and, and the purpose for lowering it and create the step back was to ensure that the Drayankas were not blocked with their right to certain amount of, of light, of sun. And so that was a purposeful design to be courteous to their neighbors. The parapits actually on the outside serve as a parapet wall for architectural detail, and they serve as the interior wall for a modern purpose, which is to give all the residences outside terraces. You take a look at the pictures that we have, let's see, I'm going to have to, I might have to grab my, grab my slides. Yeah, you can see it up from the first one. If we could just go to our very first slide, click up to that. Here's the same description. You can see the metal beam overhead, which is indicative of the historical type of period. You've got the red brick. You've got, actually, another thing that was mentioned was, was public-oriented, can't think of the term, for, for, for plants out front. You've got the parapet that goes above the retail, and that then turns into a nice residential area for the people living there. Let's talk about that for half a second. You're going to have 14 new residences in Old Town. I can tell you, there is, it is absolutely necessary to have a vibrant, rejuvenated Historic District by having people live there. LODO didn't quite get off the ground in Denver until they did a lot of residential buildings. And it's the mixture of the residential that creates a thriving downtown district. It's why people are going to want to get off that light rail. It's why people are going to want to come to Arvada to get off the light rail, but you're going to have to have people downtown living there. And this assists in that. Again, with respect to the design guidelines, come back to, come back to those. You've got to ask yourself, is it accurate, is it advocacy or is it accuracy? Mr. Foster wants you to believe that there are 44 design guidelines that your staff has missed? I mean, it's really kind of an insult to your staff. It's almost not possible that there could be a disparity between three or four versus 44. And why? Because the staff did a really good job. It has to be attacked. They got to take an extreme position because they don't have the facts in their favor. There's an old expression in the law when you're fighting. If you've got the facts, pound the facts. If you've got the law, pound the law. And if you don't have either, you pound the table. And for Mr. Foster to come before you and say that there are 44 design guidelines that have been missed, he's pounding the table. Your staff are really good at what they do. And again, it's advocacy, and you can't let advocacy get confused with accuracy. And that's what that, that's what Mr. Foster's presentation has been. 90% of it has been exaggeration and, and advocacy because your staff's too good to make it that bad. Didn't happen that way. With respect to the waivers, we've talked about it a little bit before. The waivers are, you only have, it's either three or four. I was confused reading it, so I apologize, but it's still a very small number. I don't know the number that, that, that can be considered in a development of this size and be passed. But I'm sure you've all seen, when you have three, four, five, maybe even eight or 10 times, that number of waivers. This is a very small amount of waivers. It was waiver B and C, both of which conclude with making sure that you are in, in tune with the intent and the purpose of why the guidelines were put together. And I read you the quote, and maybe I'll read it to you one more time. I'm sure my time is winding down. But at the end of the day, Grand View has worked very hard to work with your staff. They both, they have both produced actually a great product. This is something that Arvada should be very proud of. It's, it's too bad that it turned into this fight because if, if it wasn't someone that felt so strongly about it, within their rights to feel strongly, I'm not, again, I'm trying to be as respectful as I know how to be, but without it, this, I think, would have sailed through, you know? So the Drayankas did a great job expressing their concerns. This is exactly the kind of project you want. It adds density. It conforms with the intent and the purpose of the guidelines. It sits, let's go to our last slide, please. It sits near the transit station, which is consistent with some of these transit goals. Oh, wait, hold on, let's do these ones real quick. How much time do I have?
Nine minutes and thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
Nine and thirty.
Nine thirty-seven, I'm confused.
You have nine minutes and thirty seconds.
Oh, I have nine minutes. I have more than I thought. All right. Thank you. Let's stop here for a moment, and let's go up one. Okay, go down to that, go down to the one. This is the, this is the elevation of the facade that was on 57th Street that Nora Winter's letter was so critical of. I, I would like to also remind everybody here, in terms of what weight to put on Mr. Winter's letter, he's obviously very good at what he does. I've cast a few gentle rocks at him as to whether he's, you know, where he lies on the accuracy versus advocacy. But what is very important, and why you should not weigh it as heavily as you might otherwise, is it's dated March 20th, 2020. This was done at an earlier part of this whole process. It was not, and he then wrote a conclusory email, which is in your packet, stating, stating that "I've looked at the new design, but it doesn't change my mind." But that simply doesn't make sense because there's four big points here that are constantly reiterated, one of which is that this facade is, does not do 57th Street justice, to say it any other way. But this is the old design. Please note that there was going to be a rooftop component. So you see the tower over on the right. I'm going to show you something a little bit later. That's been removed. The third floor has been indented backwards to be consistent with the guidelines. There's, you see, there's a, a window on the complete right-hand side first floor. Next to that is a service entrance. The service entrance appears in his letter only once, but Mr. Foster placed it in his complaining slides in about five different places. That service entrance is no longer there, and yet Mr. Winter says, "I still stand by my own decision." Because you're not supposed to have a service entrance out on a public street. Well, we moved it inside. We, we were respectful, and we listened to our opponent's criticism. Along the same lines, it does look a little bit like the back of a, of a, you know, of an entrance, for lack, a lack of a better description. But there was another complaint that he had, which is that the pedestrian entrance was not satisfactory and didn't meet compliance. We've changed both entrances. There's an entrance here that didn't exist before that is on 57th and therefore complies. And there's an entrance, I'm going to show you a picture of in a minute, that is perpendicular to the street but comes out onto a courtyard. That was changed. Now, none of, we didn't hear about any of those changes from Mr. Foster. He just said, "We put lipstick on a pig." It's not true. We worked really hard to address Nora Winter's concerns. So let's go to the next slide, please. Here's the new design. I think you would agree with me that it, it does 57th Street a lot more justice. Mr. Foster said, "It does look a lot better." But more importantly, with the specific guidelines that it meets, it's got a, it's got a pedestrian entrance, which it didn't have before. That was one of his criticisms. Check. Problem solved. It has removed the service entrance from the ground floor. Check. Problem solved. It's done, it's worked hard to add awnings and windows to give this the sense of a front of a building instead of the sense of the back of a building. And with all due respect to the Drayanka's property, look at the one to the right. What do we have back there? We've got, I believe, a renovated house with two garage doors on it that I don't think are functional, but that looks like what is usually, you know, faces an alley. I don't quite understand where they say ours looks like the back of a building when in fact theirs looks like it should be on an alley. And we've worked really hard to make, to improve this. So let's go down one more slide, please. Here's the disparity, here's, here's the two of them put together. So relative to his comments, we took the top of the tower off on the right-hand side. We indented the third floor. We, we incorporated a pedestrian door. We eliminated the service entrance, and we did our best to make it look like the front of a building on a street that, from what I understand, and this is, this is all third hand, 57th Street probably has a quarter of the foot traffic that Grand View does. So we've done a lot to, to, to balance Mr. Winter's concerns, and yet he says he has the same opinions that he had before. That's, that doesn't make any sense. So I would suggest that his letter of, 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 of March 20th be weighed little, little less heavily than it, than it might be based on his criteria and his reputation. Let's please go to... Yeah, let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, now, this is, I, I don't have a before and after, but here is the corner of the retail, of one side of the retail. You can see people walking out by where the little pine tree is, and the door, and so that's, that's, that's a little courtyard, and the door is perpendicular to Grand, to Grand View, which is explicitly permitted so long as it comes out on a courtyard by your guidelines. This was another amendment that was done out of respect to Mr. Winter's criticisms and for which he gave us no acknowledgement or recognition and for which... And for which the Durancas are still arguing that these things are not in compliance when in fact they are. Okay, let's go to our last slide, please. Now, this is a elevation, obviously taken from the other side of the train tracks. Or, in this case, the light rail tracks. Another, another element that was set forth in Arvada's description of why, of the importance of its historic district was the great growth that was able to be accomplished as a result of the presence of the railroad. The railroad brought in materials, it brought in people, it, you know, and it stimulated the economy. Well, what is this going to do? When somebody comes by on the light rail, you know, flash forward 100 years, maybe even more, I keep forgetting, it's 2020. Flash forward 100 years from this older era, and what do you have? You've got a very compelling, attractive building that ties into Arvada's own description of why it should be in a historic district to allure people, you know, to maybe for spontaneous, to spontaneously get off and go explore. And certainly to make it attractive and comfortable for people that use this as a destination. I mean, at the end of the day, this development is going to be the gateway to the light rail. And I don't know what anybody else has to envision for it. Again, with all due respect to the Durancas, one little, small, renovated, turn-of-the-century house is just not going to create a sense of excitement for the purpose of getting people off the light rail, which is one of the goals that the transit plan seeks. A higher-density residential project, mixed-use project, in conjunction with the light rail station. So, I've got a couple of final comments? Boy, lucky. I have one, I have one concern to share and a few, and a few reasons why I think that you should endorse your staff and that you should deny the appeal and that you should approve this project. And I want to be careful and respectful here. But this group has come in, they've spent many years, they've worked with your staff, they've listened, they've worked with the community. They've put together what I believe, in an objective viewpoint, is a wonderful-looking project. If you were to deny this application and say, "It's simply not what you want," I think you really should give some thought to the ramifications of the likelihood of another developer wanting to come and do a significant development here. What kind of message is that going to send? It may be a long time before you get someone, Mr. Foster says they're not the right developer, but you may not get another developer for a long time if you deny this. Now, with respect to why you should, why you should approve, 70 of 73 design guidelines. We've talked about it. Many more are usually utilized. Only three or four partial waivers. Statistically, you know, I think it's a very, a very incredible accomplishment of staff and the developer. If you would remember my comments on how judges make decisions, again, you should rely upon the recommendations of your staff, the DRC, and your director. That's why they're here. It would be a horrible referendum on them if you were to turn this down. They've all recommended it.
Mayor, that was thirty minutes.
I just want to say, it complies with the intent and the guidelines. And last but not least, bear with me, this project's going to be great for Arvada. Everybody's going to be really happy that it's here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Foster.
All right. I'm going to make you a deal. I'm not going to use it all, okay? You can hold me to that. The, let me begin. Let me begin with one of the last comments that was made when we saw a little picture of a carriage house on 57th. You might know that carriage house. I'll direct your attention beginning on page 289 in the record. That's Dr. Foster's carriage house from 1875 that the Durancas own. And you'll see in the record that that carriage house has been restored, not to the finished level that the Durancas would like, but you'll see how they've modified the inside of that house. And I actually can't think of how I could have said anything better about how this isn't the right developer than to have their lawyer stand up and talk about how a home from 1875, the carriage house from 1875, looks like it should be sitting on an alley. Because that's the developer that is asking to build in Old Town. I couldn't have done that any better myself. And so I direct your attention to the record, the 1875 historic building that sits here in Old Town, Nevada. It was also mentioned that, and in fact, the attorney said, "The front of it is beautiful," making reference to the two sides. There is no front here, folks. There are two fronts. There's no back. There's not supposed to be a back. 57th is supposed to be activated. In fact, there were probably a half dozen references within the DRC hearing where the architect and the developer kept making references to the rear. 57th has to be activated. It's part of the design guidelines. I was admonished, and Lori was admonished, to stick with the design guidelines. And then the attorney gets up here and talks about comp plan and transit plan and a bunch of things other than the design guidelines. And the design guidelines talk about activating 57th. And let's make one thing abundantly clear. Nora Winter hasn't been paid a penny. Not one cent. I wanted to hire him. I wanted him to be an expert. And he took the plans. He sent me his response. And he sent me the updated response because I knew somebody was going to get up here and say, "He didn't see that revised plan." And so we got him to look at it again and stand behind his initial report for free. By the way, I think that's more of an acknowledgement as to how important Arvada is and how much he appreciated the work that he did for you. Because for no money, he was willing to review that plan and determine its consistency or lack thereof with your design guidelines. Yeah, I am an advocate. I'm a lawyer. But I'm accurate. I'm honest. I'm straightforward. We've had our disputes. And I'm an advocate. But I'm honest, and I've been accurate throughout this entire process. And I am, it's one of the reasons why I'm still able to be a land use attorney after 25 years going to city council meetings all over the place. Because I'm accurate while being an advocate. And in this particular instance, we've identified issues that I know are important and relevant to each and every one of you tonight. Everybody in here loves Old Town. And, and we've identified the issues that are of concern. The accuracy in terms of the number of contributing structures, I've been very clear about this. Three of 11 are residential. I never talked about all of the commercial buildings. You'll see it in the record as well. We were very clear that it was a mix of structures within the historic district when it was initially approved, between commercial and residential. And we made a big deal out of the fact that three out of the 11 contributing structures were going to be demolished with this one proposal. So I, I'm sorry if you thought I was hiding the ball, if you thought I was inaccurate at some point. But I feel like Lori and I have been 100% accurate. It is true, she doesn't like this project. She also doesn't like the buildings as they sit there today. And something needs to be done, but not this. And you've seen two examples in your packet as to preserving those two front properties as residential and building something more significant on the backside that would allow a developer, and maybe it's not this developer, but a developer to get a reasonable return on their investment. I, I'm going to leave it at that. I'm sure you have questions. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. We've appreciated the opportunity to present tonight. We've appreciated the opportunity to walk through the design guidelines. And we'll be available for any questions that you might have. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, need a break? Are you ready to launch in? Okay.
We'll take a quick recess.
And at this point, I'll open it up for... First of all, I'll ask our city attorneys. Madam City Attorney, is there anything you need to make in terms of a record or anything that you need to...
Your Honor, if you have any questions that come up while you're deliberating, let me know. There are a couple of things we can discuss if it becomes relevant to counsel's determination, but I can make certain that whatever counsel is considering is relevant to the determination. The one thing that I did hear that I want to make certain counsel is aware of, in one of the party's arguments, they were talking about mass and scale. So I wanted to remind counsel, it is 5.21 that discusses that, or not 5.21, 5.19, that talks about maintaining traditional size of buildings as perceived at the street level. So it really is about the pedestrian experience going through. So when, if we talk about mass or scale, that is what is relevant from a mass or scale perspective. When we're talking about how far back the building goes, things like that, that gets really close to those development standards, which is not at issue tonight. So I wanted to make sure that I reminded counsel of that.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it up for counsel questions or comments or, at some point, action. Mr. Fiverr.
I'll kick us off with just, I just have one question, and it's really to the Arvada staff around parking. I don't know who will answer it, but the question I have around parking, why I want to ask about parking is about the design. Don't we have some sort of requirement of how much parking needs to stay on the property itself?
So let me have Rob Smetana respond to this one.
Thank you.
Rob, you're muted.
There you go, Rob. Still muted.
Still can't hear you, Rob.
So, Rob, it's Bruce at home on Zoom, and I hear you.
Now we got you.
Okay, great. You can hear me now.
We can. We can hear you now.
All right. No, we do have minimum off-street parking requirements. One space per each residential unit are required within the Old Town zoning district.
So that is for onsite parking? So they are required, and based on the design of this building, it's kind of, there's limited choice of how to access that onsite parking?
Correct. They have two frontages, and obviously you have to get access to the required off-street parking from one frontage or the other.
Okay, so, okay, so there's, needs to be onsite parking for, and that's why one of the frontages have to have that access. Okay, that's the only question I had, Mayor.
Okay. Other questions? Other discussion? Mr. Fiverr?
Do you want me just to make, are we moving to motion if there's no more discussion? Or is that the next protocol?
If there's no other questions or... I think Mr.?
Well, if you want, I'll make the motion, or if Mr. Mayor wants to...
I think Mr. Jones might have some questions or comments.
Yeah, just a couple of, well, one question, which may lead to more questions, but as we look at the 8.6, is that the, is that where the criteria for demolition?
Yes, it's one of the criteria for demolition.
And if I could use my lap or my iPad really efficiently, I could get right to it, but I can't. So let me see if I can rely on my notes. So there's seven criteria that have to be met for the certificate of compliance for demolition. Is that, am I saying that the right way?
Yes, you are. It's, there are some of the guidelines that we have to meet in order to, in order for counsel to issue a certificate of compliance, or affirm the issuance of a certificate of compliance.
And do all seven criteria have to be met in order for that certificate to be issued?
That is correct. Either guidelines have to be met, or waiver criteria have to be met in order to justify not meeting the guideline, if that makes sense. So if you look at a guideline, including these demolition criteria, and you determine that one of those criteria is not met, the next step in your decision-making process would be to analyze whether one of the four waiver criteria might apply to justify issuance of a certificate of compliance anyway.
And so for, just basis of example for myself, 5.26, which is the window spacing pattern, that's one of the possible waivers, or that's, that's one of the waivers that the director issued?
Yes. The director determined that 5.26 was not met, and applied one of the waiver criteria in order to justify the fact that that particular guideline was not met.
Okay. And same with 5.28?
That is correct.
Okay. And those, were those the two that didn't meet the guidelines, or does it also go further into that? I'm just trying to make sure I got the path.
Of course, of course. So in terms of the director's decision, it was 5.26, 5.28, and then demolition criteria A6 that the director found were not met, but found that waivers were appropriate.
Okay. Pardon, just bear with me for a second here. I want to make sure that... Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. If there are not any more questions, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to get a motion out on the floor, and then I'll make some comments to my motion, if that's okay.
Did you want to make the motion? Okay.
Your Honor, I had one quick thing. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear with Councilmember Jones. There are 11 criteria on the demo criteria. So if you look at the first section, there's the six, and then there's four more under Section B, specific project criteria.
And that's probably correct. I was just going by my notes and notes that I took during the DRC, and so I wrote seven, but that didn't mean that that was correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, Mr. Marriott?
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Move that Grandview Station's certificate of compliance with the Old Town Design Guidelines located at 7315 and 7317 Grandview Avenue and 7318 West 57th Avenue be approved. The motion is based on the findings of fact of the Community and Economic Development Director's issuance of the certificates of compliance, including waiver approval criteria on page 30 of the staff report. So that's my motion. I'd like to speak to it quickly. So I also looked at all the design guidelines, and taking into account the information that was presented at the Design Review Committee hearing, as well as tonight. And as I go through all these criteria, and they're on page, starting on page 31, going to page 33 on the staff report, I look at each one of these, and I happen to agree that these are met, or very significantly met. The couple that are not met, it becomes a question of whether a waiver is warranted or not, using the criteria that's available to make those waivers. And I happen to agree as well with the waivers for the three criteria that I see that this doesn't met. And that's, that's 5.26, the window spacing pattern. I believe the justification for that waiver exists within the criteria, and so I agree that that waiver is justified. The storefront components is the one that I would probably come the closest to saying is not justified, but I believe that's justified as well, again, based on the criteria for waivers. And then A6, I believe so too. And I want to make a comment about that. You know, these, with this many design guidelines, I don't believe any of them are absolute. I think that's part of the arguments we've been hearing tonight, is the absoluteness of whichever one you choose. Some of these even somewhat conflict with each other at times and places. I think what we have to use is the totality of the evidence to decide those kinds of things. And so in my mind, the totality of the evidence shows these waivers are warranted, and so I will be voting yes on this motion to approve.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have notes all over the place. I too have read all of the documents sent to us and watched the, all of the hearings that have been presented to us, so I want to disclose all of that. So just made some notes here, and as all of us know, are well aware, development in Old Town requires a careful balance between preserving Old Town's historic, cultural, and architectural heritage on one hand, and on the other, responsibly managing growth within Old Town, especially in the transit-oriented development areas. Our guidelines encourage developers to draw upon building traditions of Old Town as large as inspiration for new and creative designs in new construction. I agree that on a technical level, this project meets applicable design review guidelines or qualifies for a waiver where appropriate, as reflected in the director's certificate of compliance. I agree with the director as articulated in the certificate of compliance that demolition review criteria and standards are either met, or they qualify for a waiver. I believe this project appropriately maintains the historic character of Old Town and the design elements of the new building, while at the same time remaining consistent with the city's goals of economic revitalization, increased investment, and increased density in the area. Sorry, I have lots of notes. That's all.
Okay, any other comments from counsel? Seeing none? Please vote on the motion. All votes cast. Motion passes five to one. Ms. Simpson voting no, all other council members voting yes, Ms. Ford being recused by motion. I want to commend both attorneys for excellent presentations, a lot of work and energy that went into this for our consideration. You both were very, very professional and did your clients proud in terms of your presentations. This is not an easy decision for counsel, but our decision's been made. Thank you. Okay, at that juncture, I will open... Get back to my agenda. Open the public hearing on the PUD development plan for Arvada TOD South, generally located at 5565 Wadsworth Bypass. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe we'll have Planning Manager Rob Smetana introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This is a request for a PUD development plan for the development of a hotel and retail complex within the planning and development zoning district. The site is currently vacant and is approximately four acres in size. The site is proposed to get access from 56th Avenue and Vance Street. Proposal includes a four-story, 128-room hotel with a maximum height of approximately 45 feet, and two retail buildings containing approximately 15,000 square feet. Approximately 28.5% of the site is proposed to be landscaped with 300, I'm sorry, with 213 parking spaces. The proposed development plan is generally consistent with the land development code regulations per the PUD development plan approval criteria. The planning commission did recommend approval of the PUD development plan during their July 21st meeting on a vote of six to zero, with one member being absent. We have received the signed posting log and the mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is available for presentation and for questions, and we also have city staff available for any questions you may have as well.
Very good. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anybody that wishes to testify on this matter, if they raise their right hand. Swear from the testimony you're going to give, this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, all three individuals have nodded to the affirmative. Applicant may make their presentation. You can certainly take off your mask when you're at the podium there.
Gladly. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I know it's not an easy time for you and the city, and appreciate your willingness to conduct this public hearing tonight. I also want to give kudos to your staff for managing a virtual process in an excellent fashion over the past few months. I'm Bill Mosher with Trammell Crow Company. I'm joined by Tina Lashbrook from Trammell Crow Company, and then remotely, we're joined by Chase Zadnik. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring him in from the Raymond Group. And we do have some variety of consultants available to answer any questions you may have, should that be necessary. Do I do the slides? Okay, next slide. Okay, thank you. Okay, just to orient you on location, what we're talking about here is the lower right corner that's red that says Hotel Retail. This is the former RTD Park and Ride site at 56th and Wadsworth Bypass, the southwest corner. This is a, on the left side of the red hotel building is Vance Street that comes south down the hill from Grandview. On the right is obviously the Wadsworth Bypass. On the north is Grandview Avenue, and to the south are the retail facilities off of Wadsworth. Immediately to the west is the movie theater, and we're at a corner from the Old Town Transit Hub. This is quite a mixed-use area in terms of its planning and activity. Obviously, we have the commercial nature of Old Town to the north, the proposed Old Town Residences multi-family project to the north, and to the west, we have both the Transit Hub and the theater, the Hilton Garden Inn to the southwest, and all of the commercial establishments along Wadsworth. So we really feel that the hotel and retail configuration that we're bringing to this south parcel will complement a mixed-use approach to the area around the transit center and south of Old Town. We have designed the buildings to relate to Old Town and this part of Arvada, but not mimic, and we think that we're addressing them tonight in a complimentary fashion that creates a modern application of a variety of complimentary materials to Old Town. This site has a variety of constraints that I'll be talking to you about momentarily. We've been spending a lot of time on this site the last couple of years dealing with market opportunities. Most notably, we spent probably a year trying to attract a grocery store to this site, which was not successful, and, by the way, significantly helped our traffic report by the time we didn't have a grocery store at this location. And we were seeking to accommodate the site constraints that I will address momentarily, and then we think we have satisfied a variety of city planning and neighborhood objectives as we've finalized our planning for this project. So, next slide, please. So let me talk about a couple of constraints. Most notably, you'll see that dotted line running diagonally from the southwest to the northeast across the site. That is a 66-inch storm line that exists underground on this site. It cannot be moved, it can't be built upon, we can't plant trees on top of it. So that is a very significant constraint on this site to make sure that we respect that 66-inch storm line. In addition, you'll notice the substantial amount of green space along Wadsworth. That currently is a storm drain easement, and you'll see the dotted line where the current easement is. With some reconfiguration, we're able to push the buildings as close to Wadsworth as we could, which was encouraged by city staff. But in this configuration, we managed to keep the buildings off the 66-inch storm line, and we create the storm detention along Wadsworth. In addition, you'll see light brown rectangles in the parking lot, one to the north and one to the south of the dotted line. Those are underground storm detention facilities and water quality treatment that will detain water coming onto the site from beyond this property, and then will be released into the storm line once the storm line can accommodate that flow. We have a third detention vault underneath the plaza that's at the corner of 56th and Wadsworth, just to the right of the north retail building. So altogether, there's three stormwater vaults that will be installed. In addition, we'll be raising the site about a foot and a half to bring it out of the, above the water. Another feature that I would point out is just to the right of the hotel is a small urban park to try and create green space at the entry. We have limited ourselves to one entry on 56th and one entry on Vance. For additional plans that we had looked at, or previous plans that we had looked at, had two entries on 56th, and we've managed to get that to one entry on 56th and one entry on Vance to help with traffic flow. We have finally designed this project to shield the parking as much as we can from the street view. So you can see that buildings face Wadsworth, face 56th, and face Vance, and have on-street or have off-street parking on-grade over the, over the storm line. So that, those are really the, the primary features of the site constraints that we've had to respond to, and the result is that on this four-acre site, and we'll get into this in a bit more detail, but just some summary facts, 128 guest rooms in a Marriott Residence Inn, which we're pleased to have been able to confirm this site with. It's about a 90,000-square-foot hotel, as I mentioned, 128 guest rooms. It's four stories high, about forty, a little under 45 feet. It's one story lower than the Hilton Garden Inn, and we were able to do that by spreading the, into an L shape along both streets. This requires us to have essentially 360-degree architecture, because the front, in many ways, is where you park, but the front is also where you come off of the transit facility. And so one of the key features that has been incorporated here is a dual entry at both the parking garage or parking lot and the corner of 56th and Vance. And we tried to activate the space particularly at Vance and 56th to create an outdoor active patio where the entrance is, and to have guests of the hotel be able to convene there, as well as the urban park that I mentioned. The two retail buildings that you see, we would have preferred to have one, but we have two because of the sewer line. But we have two buildings. The north one is about 7,000 feet, the south one is about 8,250 feet, so about 15,000 feet of retail altogether. They're one-story buildings, roughly 20 feet, 19 to 20 feet tall, and as you can see, a fair amount of open space around them, and we are designing them to have plazas on the southwest corner of the first building, the northeast corner of the lower building, and on the south edge of the lower building down by the south property line. So a fair amount of orientation to outdoor, hopefully dining, and other activities that will activate this site. Finally, we have a total of 213 parking spaces. We have one space per hotel room, and 85 spaces for the retail, which meets Arvada codes. With that, I'm going to ask Tina Lashbrook of our staff to walk you through some more of the details of both the hotel and the retail project. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you're aware, we're requesting the approval, if you could go to the next slide, please, of a planned unit development or a PUD. We started the entitlement process last fall, submitted our formal application in March of this year, and have been working with the city in the same timeframe that the new LDC was being written and approved. Because the new LDC was in its own approval process, the city staff recommended that we proceed with the PUD approval pathway and use the MXC 65 Zone District as a guide. There are eight approval criteria, seven criteria that are applicable to our site that need to be met for approval of a PUD. We feel we meet these criteria, consistent with the staff report. The zoning chart shows the zoning statistics of our project, and we can come back to review it if you have any questions after we... it if you have any questions after we review our design. Next slide. Our overall site was designed with the open space and the small urban parks in the forefront. We've got 28.5% open, with 24% of that space landscaped. Our small urban parks are a little over 7,200 square feet combined and just over 4% of our site. We plan to design in concert with the north parcel to make the entire development feel cohesive. The images on the slide are examples of our design will potentially look like. The top left is the corner plaza and urban park at Wadsworth and 56th. The two images on the top right are of our north project. The Transit Hub is on the lower representative retail patio. And then the bottom right is the hotel patio representation. Next slide. This rendering, again, is the corner of Wadsworth Bypass and West 56th Avenue. It's one of our urban parks. And we plan to design it with a complimentary palette as a gathering place for pedestrians, an entrance to our development, and as a feature that will stand out as a place to be. We have the storm pipe and the underground water quality vault we'll design around, but we're excited to have this amenity as a part of our site. As you've heard, we've got the two retail buildings right along West 56th and Wadsworth Bypass. You also see in the next couple of slides that we've paid close attention to making sure we've designed the buildings with 360-degree architecture. Through changes in materials and textures, utilization of a cornice, enhanced architectural detailing expressed through metal awnings, frames, and fins, proposed materials include brick, wood-like siding, fiber cement, textured metal siding. And we wrapped the transparent glazing where possible and included spandrel glazing and art panels where we could not use the transparent glazing to continue activating all sides of the building. Next slide. This view of the building shows the interior of the site and a portion of the parking lot. You again see how we plan to break up the facades to make each retail space its own place, rather than design like a standard strip mall. We want this retail development to feel special, a destination, a special neighborhood place. We plan to have a design guideline included within our leases that will allow tenants some flexibility to individualize their storefront doors and signage to make each store feel unique. There's no on-street parking, as Bill's mentioned. So we needed to design the main entrances of the retail spaces from the parking field. We did, however, make one entrance for each of the buildings as close as possible to both West 56th Avenue and Wadsworth Bypass. The building on 56th has an entrance at the entrance drive into the site on the west side of the building. And the one along Wadsworth Bypass, the entrance is on the north side of the building, off the urban park plaza, and connects to the corner of the site. We have, as Bill mentioned, 213 spaces. And at this time, we don't know the retail mix will be, but we've got strong interest from best-in-class local and regional restaurants, which make it clear that the parking ratio will be key to their decision-making. We've done the parking calculations with a potential mix, as well as assuming all the space be parked at the highest required ratio of five per thousand. We've done extensive market research and believe our current proposed parking count meets the needs of the site with flexibility for what may come in the future. Next slide. So this view is off of West 56th Avenue into our site. You can see the varied materials. We've wrapped the transparent glazing using the art panels to maintain that 360-degree architecture. You also see the entrance into the building halfway down on the west side of the building. Now I'm going to turn it over to Chase with Raymond Group to talk about the hotel design. Thank you. And you can go to the next slide.
Sir, were you, did you swear yourself in when I was having people swear in?
I did. I can do it again if.
That's fine. As long as you represent that you did, that's fine.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I am Chase Zadnik with Raymond Management Company. And I am presenting a four-story Residence Inn by Marriott Hotel. As Bill described, it's 128 guest rooms, just under 45 feet tall, and it does provide for 360-degree architecture. When we were given the opportunity to program and design the site, we were instantly drawn to the corner of 56th and Vance. And we saw that as a very important corner for the overall project, for the overall site, and especially for the hotel. So that drove, that drove a lot of our decisions as we programmed the site, as we designed the interior of the hotel and the exterior. We view that activation along 56th and Vance as really critical to the guest arrival. We do have an entrance on the parking lot, and that's designed to be aesthetically pleasing and landscaped appropriately. It's a very important entrance point for vehicular access. But we view the backside facing the Transit Hub, facing Old Town, as really important to the development. So we hope you can view the renderings and the design to see that we've paid a lot of close attention to activating that corner and creating a lot of interest there. This rendering you're looking at shows an outdoor patio that really does a lot to activate that corner. We want guests to come into the hotel, be comfortable, enjoy a really great guest experience, but then be able to get out and explore Old Town, Nevada, get on the transit line, do what, what Old Town has to offer, which is a lot. So we think this is a great opportunity to construct a hotel. It's going to provide a great access point to the amenities Old Town has to offer and a competitive advantage to the hotel as opposed to other competitors in the, in the area. You'll notice also on this, this view, we use a mix of materials, high-quality materials. We focused, for a strong base along the first floor, with a mixture of brick, glass, and then the floors two through four, we've continued that design and really enhanced its look by variating the design envelope and creating articulation as you move around the building and providing that 360-degree architecture. You can go to the next slide, please. A little bit on the brand. Residence Inn is an all-suites extended-stay hotel. It's in the upscale brand category. It offers complimentary hot breakfast. We will have a fitness center, a swimming pool, the outdoor living room that I spoke to earlier. And I'd just like to note that in the Marriott family, Residence Inn is considered the most loyal brand for all the customers. It really has a great brand following. And the extended-stay component is important because we want our guests that are staying with us for upwards of four or five nights or longer to be able to get out and enjoy Old Town. And having guests in the hotel for an extended period of time allows them to get out and go to the shops, go to the restaurants, and explore what Old Town has to offer. So it's really important that we design that hotel to really invite that experience. And we think we've done that. I believe that covers the balance of my comments. Thank you for the opportunity to present, and I'll pass it back to Bill, and you go to the next slide.
Thank you, Chase. Well done for the technical part of that. So when we were at Planning Commission, and obviously Neighborhood Meeting, and whenever we talk to folks, there's always a discussion of height. And so I want to talk about two things, height and views. First of all, this slide, we were asked at the Planning Commission and the Planning Department was also asked about heights. So these are heights of the top of buildings above the grade, the pavement, if you will, of Grand View. So just to walk our way around that, the garage, the Transit Hub is about three feet above the pavement of Grand View. The clock tower, by the way, is about a little over 30 feet high. And people in the neighborhood ask about heights in terms of where the clock tower is because that's something that they can see and measure off of. So that's 30 feet. The theater to the south is about four feet above Grand View. The Hilton Garden Inn to the southwest is about 24 feet above Grand View. Coming to the right, our proposed hotel is approximately 13 feet above Grand View at its top. The proposed retail buildings are actually 18 feet below the elevation of Grand View. And then, of course, the proposed multifamily, which isn't a subject of today, but it's 26 feet above the base of Grand View. So, next slide, please. And by the way, one of the things we've been asked and we don't know is what the tree canopy is along Grand View, but it's probably in excess of 20 feet tall. But we, we are in the process of figuring that out, just for information purposes. And then lastly, last slide is just related to views, and some of you have seen this before. There's a reference to the view corridor from the transit station, which is the one that shows in yellow there. And this shows how it's framed. And then how view corridors are affected from the mountains along Grand View and back to the southeast. So those are informational, if you have questions. Next slide. So with that, we conclude our presentation and happy to take any questions or discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members.
Thank you. Mr. Byers, you wish to testify on this matter?
Before I did, I wanted, was that Craig back there before? We've got two of our core officers here who are absolutely amazing. Craig stepped out. I work with a lot, dealing with the homeless community. Craig and Mark, Mike here, they're just amazing. They have the two Ts, temperament and training, and they do an amazing job along with Sarah Haran. So I just wanted to say that before.
Thank you.
I was part of the, the Citizens Committee for both the design review and the TOD. And so whenever I see one of these things, I want to come and comment on them. I always look at parking and the view. And I think this one meets the parking. I'm a little concerned about the view, but I'd ask you that you look at that. But on the whole, I support this one. So I just didn't want to be someone who always comes and says, "No." But I also, also always want to point you back the TOD that talks about parking, and we do not want parking infringing on neighbors. We do not want parking coming into Old Town and hurting our merchants. And the view. And the view in the TOD talks about all of Grand View. It doesn't talk about part of it. And if you look on that thing, the one thing, if you look on the east side, you've got six stories going on the east side, which takes away part of that view as well. So I'm sure I will be back when the north part of this comes back to talk about how I think the north part that's proposed does not meet TOD, but I think the south part does. And so I want to be in support of, of this side of it and be able to speak positively as well as not. But I would, for all of us who did all that work back then, it is frustrating when we see those things being changed and from our standpoint, see that, you know, a lot of slippage here in what we originally wanted and, and what we think is in the guidelines. So I want to be supportive of this one. And again, I would ask you, when you're looking at the whole view thing, to understand that on the east side, when you look at that picture, you've gone six stories, so that view is gone. If someone goes six stories where that storage is, does everyone understand what I'm talking about? Okay? But overall, I think this would be a good addition for that piece of land.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Anybody else wish to testify? I don't believe we've got anybody signed up by Zoom. We have nobody on the phone. There are no other members of the public in council chambers. I'll close the public testimony portion. So for Trammell Crow, do you have anything else that, obviously, I don't think you've got a need for rebuttal based upon the public testimony?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. I will close the, the public comment portion in the presentation and open it up for City Council questions and action. Mr. Jones, you're first.
I have just a couple of questions. The, for the hotel, for the trash, it looks like they're going to have to come all the way across the parking lot to throw away trash. Is there a different way that the hotel's managing trash?
If you can go to, you're correct that there are the dumpsters on the south side of the site, if you go to slide three. And that will be where the hotel and the retail trash will be taken.
So in that, in that corner where it looks like there's maybe four dumpsters?
Oh, no, it's down in the middle.
Oh.
Like, there's two areas on the south line. So it's more, it's closer to the edge of the hotel.
Now I see it. I didn't see that before, so that helps answer my question.
Okay.
And then I don't know if you can answer this question, but with regard to parking, I appreciate the fact that the park, that it's designed the way it is to have the parking kind of inside the corridor or the campus, however you want to call it. But how do, with no on-street parking, how do we ensure that we don't have overnighters who may be visiting other proposed sites or are in other, or need a place to park their car because there's nowhere else to park it? They come and park it in the hotel parking lot overnight, and they're really not a guest. Is there a way to track that or mitigate against that?
Sure, we would be able to manage it with the hotel with license plates, you know, when you sign into a hotel and.
Because I could see that could be a potential.
But there'd be a management firm that would manage the site overall. And if it became an issue, then we would be able to mitigate it.
And then the, the landscape buffering along Wadsworth Bypass. I mean, I really like, I mean, based on the drawings, I really like that, but could, one, it feels like it's a little, there's, it's right next to quite a bit of traffic, but it looked like it was going to be inviting for people to go throw the frisbee and things like that. And how do you discourage that? I mean, or are you trying to discourage that?
No, well, on the south end of that southern retail building, we're hoping that there's some long games, like cornhole, or if we get a restaurant that has something like that.
But inside the courtyard, but not necess, but on the grass area?
The grass area is more detention area, so it's going to be graded as such.
Okay.
So it won't be flat.
It's not going to be a flat playground?
No.
Okay, that, and again, I know those pictures are like two-dimensional with that.
Right.
So, okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
So I appreciate that. And then, did you say that the parking, the five per thousand inside, that took into consideration the highest use for the retail?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So the 85 spaces will come with that.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. So first, I think I just want to disclose that this is not my hotel. It's a coincidence that they happen to name their hotel chain after my last name. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that I personally have nothing, no interest in this property. Kind of teasing. Anyway, I do have a question, however, and that is the, is there a plan for the hotel to have meeting facilities or ballroom kind of facilities or anything like that at all? And if not, why not?
Do you want to answer that, Bill?
Chase, Councilmember Marriott, we'll just pass out your cell phone when anybody needs a reservation. Chase can add if he has any different response than I have, but generally, the Marriott Residence Inn does not have much meeting space because it's a longer-stay hotel. We also did not have the parking on this site. It's a four-acre site. And even if we eliminated the residential or the retail use, which would create a little bigger parking field, we still cannot accommodate much meeting space.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. That's a good, good answer. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can't ask you no other questions. I'm ready for a motion. Ms. Ford? Okay, of course.
So my question, either one, has to do with the retail space.
So my question, either one, has to do with the retail space. How will you, it says, you know, you have the option of five to eight spaces. How will you go about marketing that to potential retailers? And how will you determine, you know, is it on a first-come, first-serve basis? Will you be designing the buildings according to who you get in there?
Councilwoman Ford, good questions. Because of this, if you can go to one of the site plans, probably page three. Because we had to divide the two buildings up, we actually don't have a whole lot of ability to divide the buildings up. Normally, you see most retail developments, those buildings would be connected, and you could divide them up into a variety of different spaces. I suspect that the north building will be one or two spaces. We have strong restaurant interest. Actually, we have fairly strong restaurant interest even in this time period, mostly because of its visibility from Wadsworth and 56th, but also because of the outdoor patio space. And as many of you know, outdoor patio space is at a premium right now, so we can accommodate outdoor patio space both to the, to that building to the west and south and to the second building to the north. And then the other site that has been very attractive so far in our brokerage efforts is the south, the lower building on the south. Has great visibility from Wadsworth and also has a patio, south sun, and some lawn area. So we've had substantial restaurant interest for people that don't have the ability to go into Old Town and want to locate along Wadsworth.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. If there are no other questions, I'd be happy to make a motion.
There are no other questions. You may proceed.
So I'll move that the PUD development plan for Arvada TOD South, generally located at 5565 Wadsworth Bypass, be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission, and I'd like to make a comment about my motion. I'll be voting yes on this motion enthusiastically. I think there's a couple of things to really like about this proposal. Number one, I think the hotel is a terrific use for both this property as well as Old Town. The existing hotel appears to be very successful. Arvada only has one hotel. This will make a second one, and I think there's demand for that in the market, and then a great effect on all the other merchants in and around both Old Town and down the hill surrounding who will gain customers from people who, who stay in the hotel, as then the greater Arvada businesses that spread out even greater, who now have a place where visiting employees can stay while they're, while they're visiting the companies as, as well as families and all kinds of things. So I think that's a huge win for, for Arvada and perfectly suited for this site. I think also the retail opportunities here are also a really good thing for Arvada and for Old Town. You know, the, the most, one of the pressing things, or one of the important things for cities, is that we both can generate sales tax revenue but also collect that sales tax revenue, and our retailers are who collect that sales tax revenue for us. And we have a tremendous asset for retailers, which is the traffic counts on Wadsworth, as well as then the accessibility of that site. And I think that will be very prime retail space. I think that's a great opportunity for Arvada to both generate and collect sales tax. I think the, the developer here is doing an admirable job of dealing with the constraints that exist here, as well as then keeping in mind all the sensitivities and, and everything that it takes to make this fit into Old Town. I think the buildings around the perimeter with the parking in the middle is absolutely the right answer, and, and so for that, because of that, all of those reasons, I'm all for this. I congratulate you on doing a very nice proposal here, and I will certainly be voting yes.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I, I too wanted to speak to the motion. I will also be very enthusiastically supporting this. I think that you've done, as Mr. Marriott detailed very clearly, a great job of using this site. As a business owner in Arvada, having a longer-stay hotel is great because I have employees who come and stay for a week or two at a time from other states. And so while there are other options in other places, this will be a great option for our company and our employees. And crazy enough, people are brand loyal, and when, when we have clients coming in from out of town, the first question is, who are your, who are the hotels? And we tell them, and they send, then have their brand loyalty, and they go and stay in another city because their hotel's not in our city. And so I think it'll be great to have some competition in the city for hotels. It'll, you know, I've stayed in Residence Inn many times, and, you know, it's just a great product. As far as the retail, I'm excited to hear that you've got in this climate restaurants that are interested. I was really worried about that and their ability to thrive, but I think having these outdoor spaces will certainly be a huge benefit to them long-term. So again, I, I think for all the reasons that Mr. Marriott stated, it's a great thing there. I'm, I'm actually kind of glad that you couldn't find a grocery store, not because I don't think it's needed, but because I think this is a much better use for this particular parcel. So for all of those reasons, I will be supporting this project, and I really appreciate you and the work that you've done to bring it to Arvada.
Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. So I actually want to echo many of the sentiments that Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones made. I'll be supporting this project. I think it's sort of, really beautifully captures kind of the essence of placemaking. It brings the new town area, serves as a connection point to the old town. People can walk down, visit the new retail, visit the new restaurants, walk up likewise. So I'm really excited to see that because right now with what exists in that space, it, it feels very disconnected. Even the movie theater almost feels like a bit of a chore to go around. So I, I feel like this will really help activate that walking space, and I'm excited for it to really service that bridge. So I won't repeat all of the same comments they have, you know, pro-competition, pro-getting another hotel in here. So great work on this development, and I'm excited to support it as well.
Yeah, I reflect back on how hard it was to get the first hotel, and everyone kept saying, once you get the first one, the second one's a heck of a lot easier, and it's, I think that's certainly proving to be true. What I really like about this are the dual entrances, and, and I appreciate the Marriott Company being willing to do a dual entrance because obviously it, it creates additional requirements for staffing, things of that nature. But I think that flow-through from, you know, access either from the parking lot or from the old town area, and, and frankly, I think it creates a great opportunity to encourage their patrons to go up to the old town area. So I think, and we've seen it with the, with the Hilton Garden Inn in terms of what a great asset that's been to benefit Old Town, and I certainly think that the, the Marriott, even if it's not named after John Marriott, is an excellent brand and will, will certainly provide, because there is a lot of brand loyalty, as, as Mr. Jones has correctly pointed out, and for all the reasons that others have stated, I'll be supporting the, the motion. All votes are cast, and that passes seven to zero. Congratulations. Good luck. Let's get her done. Okay, that ends our public hearings for tonight. Is there any member of the public that wishes to readdress City Council during public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the second public comment portion, open it up for any City Council I'm not seeing anybody wishing to make a City Council report at this time, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Devon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next Monday will be all remote for a workshop item on the soils report for the Jefferson Parkway. So we won't be in council chambers, we'll be all remote, and I believe you will get your packets tonight for that workshop, and, and we look forward to presenting the information. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Morris, anything you have?
I have one quick housekeeping matter. So as part of the appeal, council's supposed to issue a written decision, and so the majority has to designate one person in the majority to sign off on that written decision. It'll track the decision that council made, it'll just be on paper. So my suggestion would be Councilmember Marriott, since he made the motion, but if anyone has any objections to that, let me know.
I'm fine with that.
Well, shouldn't the mayor represent council since it was unanimous? It doesn't matter.
I'll be happy to sign it.
Or, no, it wasn't. It's 5-1, sorry. No, it's no problem. Just usually the mayor represents us as council on those kind of matters, but I'm good either way.
Doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys want to do.
I'll sign it.
Okay. We'll work with you and, and be in, in touch quickly.
Very good. And Ms. Morris, I want to thank you for your work and your office's work on this. This is the first one of these appeals that we've done in this process. I appreciate your legal advice and, and guidance in terms of getting us through it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a huge team effort. Definitely, there's a lot of people from community and economic development, as well as a lot of individuals on my team who contributed to this.
Right. Thank you. Okay, we stand adjourned.